I'm gonna go ahead. There we go. So the meeting is currently being recorded. And also start off introducing myself. So I'm Juan Sebastian Arias, Deputy Director of Policy for the Mayor's Office, Office of Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot. And I'm also joined here today by a number of colleagues who I will allow introduce themselves in just a second. But before doing that, I wanted to just thank you all for joining us. I'll say a little bit more about the purpose and the structure of today's meeting in just a minute, but I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves right now, too. So first, I'll pass it over to my colleagues at the Commission on Human Relations, Ken Gun.
I am Ken Gun. I'm the First Deputy Commissioner here at the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm Joanne Newsom, Deputy Commissioner at the Chicago Commission on Human Relations.
Thank you both. Erin, Department of Housing.
Hi, my name is Erin Johnson, Project Manager with the Department of Housing. And I'm joined by a colleague, but they're having phone issues. I can say I'm joined by my colleague Cindy Soto, who's the Managing Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Housing.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you, Cindy. I'll pass it over to the Chicago Housing Authority.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Burns. I am the Chief Housing Choice Voucher Officer for the Chicago Housing Authority. Welcome, everyone.
Oh, Jessica, I don't hear you. I didn't hear you. Not sure if your mic might not be working, but we also have Jessica Mallon joining us. Well, it looks like maybe she's about to be connected. Sorry, no, that didn't work. Oh, now I can. Now I do hear you.
Okay, great. I'm Jessica Mallon. I am the Director of Fair Housing and Policy with the Chicago Housing Authority.
Great, thank you. And then we also have some of our partners from the Enterprise Community Partners as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andy Gere. I'm the Market Leader for Enterprise Community Partners here in the Chicago office. And I'll turn it over to my colleague Jared Elwell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jared Elwell. I am a Senior Director for Strategy and Implementation with Enterprise Advisors, which is the Technical Assistance and Consulting Department within Enterprise Community Partners.
All right. Thank you, Jared and Andy, and thank you, everyone, for introducing yourselves. So just to get started on the purpose of our meeting or hearing today, this is the second public comment hearing that we're hosting about the Chicago Blueprint for Fair Housing. So we'll go over just maybe 10 minutes or less of some context setting and overview of the Assessment of Housing process and the goals and strategies that we are including, that the City of Chicago and the Chicago Housing Authority are including as a part of this blueprint. And then we will have the rest of the time open for questions and comments. So we will do a brief, a brief presentation, but the vast, you know, bulk of this, of this meeting today or hearing today will be for public comments. So before jumping in and passing it off to Jared, Jared to do an overview of the process, I just wanna echo or reaffirm on behalf of the Mayor's Office, our commitment to this, to this issue, to tackling the fair housing issues of racial segregation and structural disinvestment as a part of the Mayor's anti-poverty and housing equity agenda. As is probably no surprise to many of you all tuning in, we know that government action has caused and exacerbated segregation and that we need intentional government action in order to address and undo it. And so the release of this Chicago Blueprint for Fair Housing outlines the actions across city departments and the Chicago Housing Authority. It outlines actions that we will take over the next five years to advance our fair housing goals. I wanna give a special note of appreciation to our partners, Jared and Andy at Enterprise Community Partners, who help facilitate this process as a part of a larger regional effort, as well as to the Chicago Air Fair Housing Alliance and the Metropolitan Planning Council, who are also part of the team. And then especially also to my colleagues, all who just introduced themselves from the, from the CHA, from the Department of Housing and the Commission on Human Relations. So again, tonight's hearing is part of our bookend to wrap up the open public comment period, which is gonna last through Friday, May 28. And we're accepting, in addition to verbal comments that are provided right now, we are accepting written comments through the, through our website at chicago.gov/fairhousing. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Jared Elwell. And Jared, just, I'll advance the slide, so you just let me know whenever you need me to move forward to.
Okay, I'll start by saying that we've worked with jurisdictions. Enterprise Advisors has worked with jurisdictions across the country to do fair housing planning. And this has been, I will comfortably say, the most unusual process we've gone through, in large part due to COVID and the interruption that it has presented to the process. So that I'm excited to be at this point in the process and to receive the community input and feedback on the Blueprint for Fair Housing. This effort represents the City of Chicago's contribution to a multi-year and multi-jurisdictional effort. We started with 13 jurisdictions and six PHAs. We are down to 12 jurisdictions and five PHAs that collaborated in conducting this regional assessment of fair housing for all of Cook County. This plan assesses the current fair housing issues. It also identifies the goals with corresponding strategies that are designed to affirmatively further fair housing. Next slide. So a little bit of background on the requirements around fair housing planning. The city as a recipient of its HUD funding, specifically its home, CDBG, ESG, and HOPA funding is required to create a consolidated plan every five years. The plan is required to detail how the funds from several, from those funding programs will be used to provide services to the City of Chicago. As a recipient of the CDBG funding, it's required to report on its efforts annually to support, to affirmatively further fair housing. Previously, there was a vehicle called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing, which up until 2015 was the vehicle for fair housing planning. In 2010, it was deemed inadequate and ineffective by the Office of the Inspector General. And it's taken a while to develop a better tool, a better vehicle for jurisdictions to comply with their AFFH requirements. Next slide, please. So here we go. In 2015, under the Obama Administration, HUD released what was called the Assessment of Fair Housing as a tool to, for jurisdictions to comply with their AFFH requirements. The administration strongly encouraged regional collaboration, regional assessments, recognizing that the interconnectivity of surrounding municipalities and that a policy or practice in one jurisdiction could be creating or contributing to a fair housing issue in an adjoining jurisdiction. In compliance with the new policy, the City of Chicago and its partners in Cook County agreed to a regional assessment of fair housing. They worked, they started working with Enterprise Community Partners to socialize the effort. In 2018, we officially launched in April of 2019. However, the administration, the Trump administration suspended implementation of the rule. And the jurisdictions, to their credit, with Cook County and Chicago leading the way, along with CHA and Hack, decided to continue and move forward with their commitment to a regional assessment. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the Assessment of Fair Housing or Fair Housing Plan is to address ongoing segregation and inequity, identify associated fair housing issues and the corresponding contributing factors that are creating, contributing to perpetuating or increasing the severity of those fair housing issues, commit to specific actions and strategies to mitigate and eliminate those fair housing issues and get to the root causes of those. Some examples, whether it's an aging housing stock with limited access for people with, with physical disabilities or an affordable community that lacks safe sidewalks or adequate lighting. Symptoms of segregation, inequity, and inequality are prevalent throughout the city. The city is not alone. It's throughout the county and throughout the country. Next slide. So the process that the partners went through to get to where we are today, it really started with that collaboration. The 19 jurisdictions and PHAs getting together and agreeing to participate. Then there was the commitment to community engagement by the city and the county, which was very strong. They they funded eight organizations throughout the county that represent different constituencies, predominantly made up of members of protected classes, to assist with the community engagement process. So they went through the process of, we did some data analysis, understanding what the fair housing issues were, identified, went through a pretty extensive process of identifying and prioritizing those significant contributing factors, and then created goals and strategies and added some specific action steps, metrics, and milestones, trying to create some smart goals that were realistic and actionable for the City of Chicago. And then determining which department is gonna be responsible for each action item, which is no easy task. In some cases, there are multiple agencies assigned to a task, but a lead department will be responsible for that action item. Next slide, please. The components of the Blueprint for Fair Housing, it starts with an executive summary. It goes into the existing conditions analysis, which is an in-depth qualitative and quantitative analysis of the fair housing issues in the city. Moves on to the contributing factors and it has a prioritization and an explanation of the process through which that prioritization has taken place. And then a presentation of the goals and strategies. There are eight fair housing goals, and I think on the next slide, Juan Sebastian, are you gonna take us through those eight? All right.
Thank you, Jared. Great. So I'll just do again a high-level overview of the eight goals that we, that are included in the Blueprint for Fair Housing. Each one of these has several strategies underneath with specific milestones and timeframes from implementation, which can be found in the full version of the blueprint on the website. So just to walk through them, to voice over the eight goals themselves, the first is around increasing and preserving affordable and accessible housing options. The second is around preventing involuntary displacement and to stabilize neighborhoods. The third is to increase opportunities for, and community integration for people with disabilities. The fourth is to address the segregation of opportunity and related inequitable distribution of resources. The fifth is to enhance housing policies and programs to increase fair housing choice. The sixth is to expand fair housing outreach, education, and enforcement. The seventh is to preserve existing and expand affordable homeownership. And last, the eighth goal is to ensure that internal policies and practices, practices advance equity and address the history of structural racism. So in lieu of going into the details of all this, we just wanted to give, the details of all the strategies, we wanted to give this overview and then just open up for public comment. So I think at this point, I'm gonna ask my, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen, or I can leave, I can leave the eight goals up if it's useful as a reference point. And actually, Erin, I'm gonna ask you if you can help provide some of the instructions on how we're gonna manage questions and comments.
Hello. Hello, everyone. So if you have a public comment that you'd like to verbalize, if you could, please use the raise your hand feature. You can find that at the bottom of your screen. And you have the option to raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, I will go through, allow you to talk, for you to vocalize your public comment. As a general guideline, please keep your comment to less than three minutes. I'll be paying attention to the time for that. The other piece is if you don't feel comfortable speaking your comment out loud, you can use the Q and A feature to, to write out your question and your question will be allowed, read aloud for the public record. All right. So thank you. I see one hand up, so I'll start with the hand that I see up. And then we'll move to the question and answer feature for for written comments. Also, I'll let you, people know that in addition to the eight panelists that you see, we have 14 other people in attendance currently. But that number keeps going up, so there may be other residents and people who are concerned about fair housing that are joining the meeting throughout.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Juan Sebastian and Erin, everyone else who's done some, I'm sure, excellent work here. I'm, unfortunately, only have gotten the full document as it stands right now in draft form just a little bit ago and haven't had a chance to do a full review. I am glad to see that there's some significant thought being put towards people with disabilities in this fair housing plan. As I'm sure you know, less than 1% of all housing in Chicago is both affordable and accessible. There are estimates that our unhoused population, anywhere from 60, 80%, of those folks have at least one disability, if not more. This is an urgent problem, and of course, COVID has revealed to us just how desperately we need to get people out of nursing facilities and group homes and into community, as was promised by the ADA over three decades ago now. I would like to stress how important it is that we are not just looking at affordable housing, but all housing and making sure that it all starts to conform to accessibility principles. Those principles, including the UFAST standards, Universal Federal Accessibility Standards. There is no reason whatsoever that any new construction done anywhere in the city for any reason, whether it's affordable or not, does not include 100% of its units at at least the ANSI Type A accessibility standard, as well as set aside for 10% at the higher standards for mobility standards and 4% for vision and hearing impairment standards as well. I'm, as I said, I was glad to see that some thought has been put towards this all. We have to make sure that we're also covering for other types of disabilities, of course, rather than just mobility disabilities, including, you know, intellectual and developmental disabilities, autism and what have you. And those standards all need to be increased and applied across the board. Beyond that, let's make sure that we are ending as much as we can the eviction process. I'm going to stand in favor of the Just Cause for Evictions ordinance that is currently in city council, and that should be a part of this fair housing plan. We have to end no-fault evictions in any and all forms to make sure that people can stay in their homes. I myself was subject to homelessness as somebody with disabilities. And because of my bout of homelessness, my disability has increased to the point where I, in fact, had an accident at work that led directly to my losing my left leg. These kinds of things can happen when we're not doing our due diligence to make sure that people can stay in their homes and are rehoused as quickly as possible. Let's make sure that we are mandating in every possible way across the city and across the state, housing first and permanent supportive housing, and doing everything we can to end the unhoused the homelessness problem and ending homelessness in general across this area. Those are the big comments I have at the moment. I'm looking forward to listening to the other comments that might be coming forward. And we'll hope to jump back on here again if there are additional comments that need to be made. But until we get every single person out of nursing facilities, out of group homes, into the community and with home-based services and supports that can help them be a part of that community, and until we end the homelessness problem, we are in dire shape here in Chicago. Thank you.
Frank, you, we can hear you if you would like to provide comments.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate that. I'm Frank Avalon. I'm an attorney at Labor's Committee for Better Housing. I'm also the creator and coordinator of the Chicago Housing Justice League. And I have been involved in anti-poverty work for the past 40 years in rural and urban America, the last 17 years in Chicago exclusively. I have just a couple of comments to make, other than starting out by saying that I've read the entire report and it's really some very great work with some very good ideas in there. I would, however, like to say that in Goal Two, the Prevention of Involuntary Displacement Neighborhood Stabilization, I don't believe that that goal can be realistically and seriously considered or resolved without passing Just Cause for eviction, as Mr. Zoltan has just stated. Just Cause is the only legal mechanism that allows people to have the expectation of staying in place and therefore being able to participate in community life without the background instability and public health consequences of being unstable in their housing. Just Cause is a policy that governs over 11 million units nationwide in six different states and countless number of cities for a number of decades. We know how it works. We know that it does work. There's no unexpected consequences. I guess my question is, what are we waiting for? I would also say as to Goal Two, that Just Cause also has the extended right to cure non-payment of rent. Goal Two does admirably say that it desires to expand the extended right to cure that was passed in the Fair Notice Bill in the summer of 2020. The pending Just Cause bill already does that. And so what are we waiting for? Finally, several points throughout different goals. There's made mention of proactive rental inspection, which is admirable. The, the substitute Just Cause bill that's being introduced right now already has a rental registry feature in it so that it sets a platform to build proactive rent inspection of any sort into the future. Again, what are we waiting for? The, as my second tier of comment, I'd like to say that when it comes to the accessibility, the handicap disabled accessibility of rental units in particular, again, the registry feature of the Just Cause bill can start the platform as early as January so that disabled folks are aware of what units are accessible and which units are not. Number three, I'd like to also point out that, again, while there are many excellent things here, I think we miss an opportunity where the Fair Housing Plan does not affirmatively consider reparations for the American descendants of slaves, ADOS. If we're not gonna include reparations for ADOS in a fair housing bill, then where do we include it? If it's not an affair of housing plan, where is it? One form of reparation can easily be how we use housing and neighborhood stabilization policy as a form and function of reparation. Many good ideas are about that already being circulated around the country. So those are the comments I had. I did have a few questions if and when you get to the point of questions just about what some of the strategies, the wording in some of the strategy actually means. For example, in Goal 7D on page 63, it talks about promoting cooperative homeownership in marginalized communities. Does homeownership then include limited equity co-ops and social housing? And why is it being limited to simply marginalized communities and those alternative homeownership vehicles not being used more broadly? So if there is an opportunity for questions about things in the plan, I certainly have a few. Again, admirable job. The, all the work about proactive rental inspection has already been done. We know about that. Programs have already been designed for Chicago. It's already been part of the Chicago planning process in the Department of Public Health for almost a decade now. Again, what are we waiting for? We have proactive rental inspection, healthy homes, just cause for eviction, ready to go, where these things are obvious strategies throughout several of these goals and even mentioned in several of these goals. I just think we should avail ourselves with what we already know and already have and not be consigned to committees and planning, endless planning. I think we should move now. Thanks much.
I can't answer the question if that's okay, or do we want to save that to a later point?
There's no other hands raised right now, so I think now would be an okay time to answer the question.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So sorry that I can't join you via video. I'm on the road, but I've been listening to everything that you've shared to David and to Frank. Thank you so much for your comments. Do know that, you know, we are diligently trying to ensure that we reach all populations and also looking at the work through a racial equity lens. So that's where the marginalized populations or communities really, you know, come to our planning process in terms of how do we ensure that there's equity and fairness in what we do. In terms of co-ops, this is really an opportunity that has first been started by the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice for their community wealth building work. But we've been engaging with them and how we can really ensure that we are funding, promoting cooperative living, and we're in the process of trying to fund that through some different means that we might have not considered in the past, but trying to think more creatively to ensure that people could remain in their communities, age in place. And we're hoping that we can bring online a co-op this year. And we have another co-op that is also in the process of some of our loyalty housing tax credit pipelines. And so that is what we're aiming for. Frank, to your question, this is more so in the sense of how do we ensure that, you know, communities and populations that are threatened by displacement or gentrification have other ways to have homeownership and to stay in their place. So like I said, it's been coming out of the Office of Equity and Racial Justice. We've also been building a framework here at the Department of Housing. And so we hope to continue to build on this as we continue to meet the goals and strategies that we set forth in this document.
Thank you, Cindy. So I see David and Frank both have additional comments or questions. I want to know if anyone else has, before we move back over to those, if anyone else has any questions, I see that there is a comment in the chat. I don't know if that person wants to raise their hand. Afrieda Shelton, if they wanted to raise their hand and speak? Okay.
I just wanted to know what will be done since there's no conviction, convicting tenants that, you know, live in housing? What will be done about the ones that break the law according to housing? Houses have certain rules and regulations in place for a reason. And this for safety, is safety not only for the adults, but for the children that are growing up in housing?
I can respond to that. I don't believe that necessarily is noted in the AFH. And actually, I think Labor's Committee might have a better response than I will, but. in terms of the moratorium, it does not apply when there is a threat to the individual. There are emergency evictions that have that have actually been in place throughout the entire pandemic. So there is a threat to somebody's well-being or, you know, to the property itself in terms of people violating the law and maybe threatening landlord or other neighbors in the building that the landlord could still pursue an eviction through an emergency order.
So what if this is not being done? What? Sorry, I'm sorry. What measures can be taken? You know, by other people that see what is going on?
I don't know if Ken and Joanne from the city standpoint, if you have additional information, the Department of Housing though did partner with the lawyers committee for better housing and a number of different community organizations throughout the pandemic so that people can seek legal assistance at no cost. And so we have an eviction page where people can go to to find out more about the different protections that exist, the resources and the partners that people can go to. Rent intervention programs through the lawyers can be for better housing, assesses these cases and might be able to assist or, you know, there are other forms of engaging with maybe some advocacy group or a legal entity that assists with a court order that is administered and enforced by the county, the county sheriff's office.
Thank you, Cindy. Just again, just making sure if there's any, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Just raise your hand. I will go move on to the hands that are raised to the the comment, the question I was putting in the chat first. And then to the hands that were raised, if there are, if there not anyone else who would like to speak currently. Okay. I'll ask Ken if you can read the comment that was put, the question I was put in the question box.
Frank Avalon asks on page 53, item 2H, is proactive rental inspection an eviction prevention mechanism? As implied in column three or for healthy homes as implied in column six? Anyone?
Hi Frank, that would be more under the umbrella of healthy homes.
Okay, I'm going to move over to the hands that are raised. So I'll start with David.
Thank you, Aaron. Back to the the question of homeownership. Why is there such a stress here on homeownership in particular? There has long been a policy preference towards that throughout the United States, as we know from the mortgage tax deduction and other programs towards homeownership, but that is not necessarily a goal for all people. And in fact, in many cases, it's not even appropriate in the case for, for instance, for people with disabilities. There are folks with disabilities who may not want to take on the entirety of having homeownership. And there we see a preference towards rental in millennials as a whole and in the coming generations. Homeownership doesn't necessarily seem to be the the necessary goal that it was back in the 50s and 60s. And perhaps it shouldn't be. I for one would would echo Frank in preferring to see more limited co-ops and social housing. The in the factions that we see in other countries and even in isolated places here in the United States. We could build towards housing that is publicly owned, is beautiful and is democratically controlled by by the people who live there. And I think that's a noble goal in and of itself. But that of course, might require something like the repeal of the Faircloth Amendment, which of course, we don't have necessary control over. But we do know from the last housing crisis that there is likely to be, in fact, we've already seen a huge amount of corporatization and takeover from Wall Street across the United States in the housing as happened after 2008. That's already been reported in the Wall Street Journal and other papers extensively throughout the COVID period, and we expect that to just increase, especially after the moratorium, the eviction moratorium ends. Are we putting any thought or any resources towards a social housing acquisition fund that would allow the city to take over properties that are being sold by landlords, turn it into public housing, place it into the Chicago community land trust on a perpetual basis and run that as a public housing option? Some of those options might in fact be accessible or could be made accessible for people with disabilities. But certainly at the very least, they could be taken from the market and saved from being taken over by by Wall Street investors rather than folks right here in in Chicago. And then to the to our colleague here who brought up the problems with eviction, I would ask, what is the presumption for those people who are being displaced for for any reason? Housing is a human right, of course. So if you're trying to displace a person who is being troublesome in some way, rather than trying to engage them and and talk to them and try to to have some form of mediation or or some kind of intervention of some kind. Where's that person supposed to go? If your answer is just away, they still have a presumption of of a right to housing. So all you're doing is being a NIMBY and and saying, not in my backyard, but whose backyard should they be in? That doesn't seem like a real solution to a human right. So we need to start rethinking perhaps the entire eviction process on the whole. We can certainly start with just cause for eviction and move from there.
Great. Thank you. I'll move on. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Please raise your hand. Just a reminder that public comment should be focused on the document itself.
Aaron, maybe we can have Jared. I don't know if it's you or Andy would be able to provide some feedback as to how homeownership might have been a recommendation that came out of the community. And just really quickly from the Department of Housing side, certainly we want to make sure there's a balanced approach. We recently completed a racial equity impact assessment, and that was something that came out of residents, you know, wanting to be able to have a pipeline to homeownership for generational wealth and wealth building opportunities. So we know that that doesn't apply to everyone, but it is something that we've heard from some of our engagement. I don't know if that's the same for for you all, Jared, when you all met with community members.
Jared is no longer on the line. What does the first half Andy may know?
Yeah, Jared had to leave, but yeah, I don't know if we have that specific information. We do know that it was brought up in particular around the potential use of housing choice vouchers to promote more homeownership opportunities relative to C H A residents. So that was something that was been had been discussed and overall, again, we're aware of the huge disparities in the racial wealth gap that is created in the city based upon unfair lending practices and just limited access to homeownership opportunities that have existed in the city. So we do think it's potentially a strategy again, under which we can address the overall racial wealth gap within the city.
Thank you. Move on to our next one.
Frank asked again, am I correct that you will accept further written comments through May 28th? Is that the right date? And I will answer, yes, sir.
Thank you. And Aaron, am I? Am I open? Have an open mic at this point?
You are open. Yep.
Thank you. I just had a process question. Maybe you could describe a little bit about how the decision-making process went to include certain strategies in the document and not include other strategies. And, you know, I'm I'm curious about that generally, but I'm also curious about how and why just cause for eviction was not included.
Yeah, I can start answering the general process that we went through. So Frank, as you may, as you may remember, or I can't remember if we covered this in the in the overview presentation, but we did. So there was for the overall process, there was the existing conditions analysis of the community engagement process or findings that Coffin in particular helped facilitate that that the engagement portion of this. And then as we started coming down to the golden strategies, started first with recommendations from the advisory committee that was convened for this that through Coffa. And then worked closely with city going through the list of recommended goals and strategies to do a feasibility screen as well as like, like, I guess feasibility is actually the best way to describe it. And so working through those questions and narrowing in on specific smart goals as much as possible. So with the specifics, measurable, actionable, realistic and time bound. That's the filter that we that we went through in order to come to the final list of golden strategies that were included on here. And I don't have more insight right now to share about your specific question on on just cause. But that is the overall process that that we went through. Okay, well, Aaron, I'm assuming we don't see any other hands raised or or Q and A's.
Correct. Okay, Frank just put his hand up again. You can take this.
Yeah, sorry, Aaron. It feels like a three-way conversation, David and I. The again, I think this is all very good work. There's some things about the report that I find a bit troubling, but that's as a general matter. More specifically though, I do want to comment to say that in the proactive rental inspection comment on page 53 of the report, it anticipates that a proactive rental inspection quote framework, whatever that may mean, ultimately would be turned over to the community for ownership and continuation. I'm not too sure what that means, but I do want to say as a member of the leadership team of the Public Health Collaborative called proactively addressing substandard housing that Cindy and others, Department of Housing, Department of Buildings have been working with over the years. We are very much against privatization of this very important public function. And so I'm not too sure what that phrase, turning this over to the community for its extended life might might entail. But I do want at least there be one comment on the record of someone that thinks that privatizing proactive rental inspection is a very bad idea. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank. And we can make sure to clarify some of that language too. Appreciate the the comment. Great. So seeing seeing no more questions or hands raised, I just wanna, I think it makes sense to to wind this down. I wanna thank everyone who's been listening in and actively participating as well. As a reminder, you can definitely still submit written comments through our website at chicago.gov/fairhousing. We can drop the the link in the chat. And we'll be following up shortly after that with the next steps that we're going to take in order to finalize to 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 respond to the public comment and finalize the blueprint for fair housing.
One, Sebastian, I think we have one final comment from David.
Okay.
So I will. You're, I will, you're able to talk now, David.
Thanks, Aaron. Because I knew you couldn't go without hearing my voice one more time. I I did want to make an additional comment here, specific around the source of income legislation that's been stuck in the Senate. As we come down to the final days, I hope that the the city has been active in pushing that legislation and talking to the senators that have that in the subcommittee at this time to make sure that that does get extended throughout the entire state. I know that we have source of income protection here in the city and the county. But I think it's important that it becomes a broader measure, partly because it needs to become the standard across Illinois. It needs to also be better enforced here in the city, and we do need to devote some of that inspections and and enforcement at the city level. Not just towards healthy homes, but making sure that people can get into those homes in the first place. As somebody who is currently going through the voucher process myself, in the hopes that I can actually have more than $14 after my my rent is paid per month. That is something that is of particular interest to me. Thankfully, I have not run into that problem in my search. But I have worked with several folks in various capacities who have very directly done so. Been directed to other parts of the city, to to other landlords. Once that voucher was revealed. So source of income is something that it doesn't just affect us here in the city. It has to be enforced better. And it must become the standard, not just across the city, but across the state. I hope that the city is working towards that. But again, thank you for for all the the time and effort you are putting in. The only other thing I'll say is I did make a brief, brief comment very in my first comment about housing first, but I cannot stress just how important it is that we make that the standard, the only standard, much as they have in Rockford. Rockford has more or less solved their their homelessness problem. If they can do it in Rockford, we can certainly scale that up here in Chicago. And I know that there have been some some additional programs that the city has done over the course of COVID that I think are proof of concept and have shown that we can do it, but we need to invest in that. We need to make it the one and true strategy. We know it works. It'll save the city money, most importantly, I think, in this time when we're having such budget problems. And we are going to treat people with the dignity they deserve by putting them in housing, surrounding them with the 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 resources that they need to survive and to thrive. And then from there, we can hope that they become, you know, active members of society and can be a part of their community in the ways that we all hope that these programs will eventually result in. Thank you again for for all your work. Hopefully that's all I have to say, but like I said, I'll go through the document and send written comments as well. And talk to you all soon. Thank you.
Okay, so we have one more hand that just came up. So that would be our last comment for the evening. Nam, Namby, I will allow you to talk and you now have the ability to unmute yourself and provide your comment.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I'm Naby Israel from Assets Living and member of disability. I'm Naby Israel from Assets Living, a member of Disability Rights Action Coalition for Housing and also a member of CAFL. I'm also a housing choice voucher persistent. Thanks in advance for listening. And just like Moses, I'm throwing speeches, so bear with me. I didn't know what I was, I thought it was a comic every comic period, I mean, period here. So that's why I came and I waited in before, just like with my patience, I waited in to listen. But I have something I would like to say, maybe less than sixty seconds, I mean, one hundred and twenty seconds. In 2019, my family and I almost became homeless because of mistakes and calculating my reasonable accommodation. I wanted to share this with Chicago Housing Authority in an opening period, but it got canceled. And that was disappointing and it shocked me and it caused confusion. Because I wasn't afforded the opportunity to share my ordeal and victory that can probably save hundreds or thousands of people going to something I went to. This new H, this housing choice voucher administration plans provides that a family with a disability may no longer request an informal hearing to challenge the denial of a reasonable compensation request. Instead, we can now only request grievance. The 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 plan didn't describe this grievance process as best. This grievance prospect is very ambiguous and frightening. Finding a place that would accommodate me with my disability is extremely was extremely hard. My family, I always think I'm homeless because of a mistake in calculating my reasonable accommodation, not once but twice in a five-month period. Thanks God, I finally found a place that accommodated me, but the landlord approved my occupation. Passed the inspection, but the C H C H A offer was incorrect because my reasonable accountability was not calculated. It was in a formal hearing that corrected the error that was made. But by the time it was corrected, the landlord leased to someone else. Three months later, the exact same thing happened to me. The exact same thing, how? And once again, the reasonable accommodation corrected the error. And closing, this new, the the new F Y two thousand twenty-one administration plan provides the family with a disability, no longer, you can no longer request any formal hearing to challenge the denial of reasonable accommodation. This disturbed me because I'm disabled in a wheelchair. And this happened not once, but twice. And I think if it happened to me, I know hundreds, it happened to them also. I noticed this was a mistake and I wanted to help the Chicago Housing Authority to see from this because you never been in the wheelchair, you don't know what I, what we both do. Or someone with a disability, you don't know what's going on. So let me offer aid of assistance, please. And that's all I my comment I have to say. Thank you for listening, everyone. I appreciate you.
Thank you. So that looks like that's the end of our public comment period. As Juan Sebastian said, we're still accepting public comment, written public comment until the twenty-eighth of this month, so Friday. And you can do that at chicago.gov/fairhousing.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, everyone. I think we're we're gonna close the meeting on that on that note. Thank you all for your comments and for participating and look forward to any other written public comments that we'll get. Have good evenings.
Thank you, you too.